Good evening, everyone. Welcome to today's session of August twenty second. Donna, we do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
And Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Tonight, Finance Director Mike Giddens has information for us about the two thousand and twenty four budget.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to, I would say, kick off the budget season, but it feels like it's been underway and never really ended. We've done a lot of work, as you know, as a city directors under your guidance to really take a close look at the two thousand and twenty three budget. As you know, we were in a position shortly after the fiscal year started that where we recognized that our expenditures were set above where our expected revenues were. We've done a lot of work to bring that in line, and so I think you'll hear a number of processes and steps we've taken tonight to lead us to a place where we're going towards a sustainable budget with some recommendations that some of you are involved in, our Financial Sustainability Task Force that was convened starting in January. That group gave us a great deal of guidance, learned a lot about the city. You'll hear from them. And so I'm pleased with kind of where we're headed with this tonight. We're going to focus primarily on the general fund. At the first study session in August, you heard from the FCS group, and we've got that at least about the water and the sewer fund and funds and where we need to go with rates and on that. And you'll certainly be presented with more of that information once the full two thousand and twenty four budget is rolled out. But tonight's focus is primarily on the general fund and kind of where we're headed with that. I know Mark's there virtually. This first slide is one that we wanted to share with you. We think it brings in focus a lot of kind of where we're headed with bringing you a balanced budget that supports critical city services. As you'll see, we're basing decisions on your strategic goals. But this diagram is kind of where we want to kick off our introduction tonight. So I'll turn it over to Mark.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Excuse me for my voice tonight, but as, as the council knows, developing a sustainable budget is paramount in operating municipal services. Those basic fundamental services are the city's priority. We want to maintain those services as best as possible and then add to those services when it's appropriate. As Mike mentioned, our kind of mid-year corrections in, in two thousand and twenty three got us to a point that we certainly are more comfortable with moving into twenty four, but there's still some work to be done. There's always challenges in municipal government and budgeting appropriately, and we have a lot of, or several factors, I guess, that, that play into that. We've had really limited residential growth in this community. We've had limited economic drivers, job centers, employers, commercial development, employment costs, liability insurance, inflationary costs of all increase, kind of at, at the same time that our revenue isn't increasing, it's staying fairly flat. So that leads us to this Venn diagram that talks about, you know, what our wants and what our needs are and what our, what our capabilities are. So I think this just isn't kind of a high-level demonstration of how services can be, what services can be provided in, in, in general, then the balancing of those services with community impacts potentially on growth and the capacity for taxation from these residents. And so as you look at this kind of right in the middle where low density, stable services and low taxes all meet, the prospect of, of, of that all happening at the same time isn't really feasible for most instances. Obviously, this is some generalities here, but that's a this kind of, I think, demonstrates the, you know, like I said, the thirty thousand kind of foot view of, of what we're dealing with. Now, we also have a community that wants to keep low density, likes lesser traffic. But i- is, is that realistic when we're talking about providing the services, particularly municipal utilities like water and sewer and, and spreading the burden of those services over more people when the regulatory costs and labor costs just keep increasing over time. So again, just a quick snapshot, happy to discuss this any further, but I think that it kind of speaks for itself. We can go to the next slide.
And all we presented in the budgets when the task force was looking at, they heard from each department director and really area within the budget and the focus on both their recommendations and then hearing from staff were on your strategic goals. And I think, you know, I know as I was applying for the job here and looking at these, they're, they're a guide for really what you're laying out. It's a blueprint for the city. And I think as we make budget and financial decisions, remembering them is paramount. That's why we included them in this presentation and to remind us all what these focuses are on for our mission to build a strong community and follow the apply.
I think, Mike, to follow up on that, just a couple of examples, by clearly defining the future, we're looking at two thousand and twenty five as we speak. So this is a kind of a parallel process, two thousand and twenty four's budget formation. We're looking out into twenty five, so we don't face some difficulties to be faced in twenty three right now. So that's clearly defining the future, right? We're looking ahead financially to see what we can avoid in the future, trying to forecast that budget as much as we can and really stage ourselves to be successful and, and deliver the services that are most important. The community safety aspect, we've recently filled the code enforcement position. We've maintained our police department FTEs, although we haven't been able to fill those. Those have been maintained in the budget as well. And we are trying to maintain our assets as best as possible. It's fairly difficult in this day and age, but we're, we're addressing the most needed improvements and repair projects within our, within our assets right now. And engaging our community. This is the first step in the two thousand and twenty four budget process, providing this opportunity for the community to understand the process, understand where we're at and, and certainly have more opportunities as we move over the next couple of months to participate in public hearings as well. So that kind of wraps up how I see us kind of addressing the strategic goals here.
And then to just lead into the Financial Sustainability Task Force, I mentioned them in the introductory comments, you know, about the convening of that group, they, I mean, I guess, I don't want to say I chaired it, but worked with them pretty closely. They were a great group to get to know, to represent the community, and I think really come to understand what challenges we face as a city. You know, their focus was also on, I would say, the general fund, just kind of knowing where our fiscal situation was, where revenues are very limited, but they heard from, you know, Jay Harris from Public Works and about the challenges with growing our water system and how that's affecting our growth as a community. And I think that in, in learning about that, they were able to make some informed recommendations and put in a lot of time as to how to present that to you in a way that was both meaningful and well-thought-out and not in a way that was maybe just a kind of knee-jerk reaction, but but recommendations that as we've been looking through it in preparing for this presentation, we've really undertaken a lot of those in, in a short amount of time since they really wrapped up their work at the end of April and through some city leadership transition, I think we've done a good job. So I'll pat ourselves on the back a little bit, and I'm happy to turn it over at this point to Pete Buckus, who is representing the task force to talk about the recommendations.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, as introduced Pete Buckus. I'm here representing the task force members. One other member, Michael Olson, is behind me in the audience tonight. The others are often other civic engagement activities, which is kind of typical of what they do. Let me give you a little synopsis of the process, talk about some observations, and then you get into a broad brush of the recommendations the task force had presented to the city manager, which is now in your court. First of all, we were formed in January of this year, just a few months ago. We had seven actual face-to-face meetings. We then spent time taking the information we picked up and did multiple rewrites of our report to make sure that what was in it was agreeable to each and every member of the task force. This was a consensus of the group. Every one of us will support the entire report. Tonight, it kind of come to do full fruition here in terms of presenting the report to the council. We proposed addressing the challenge that faces the community and you as the community representatives in three general areas. First was reductions in program, service delivery, or property investments. Second was looking at revenue enhancements, and let me give you two examples. You've already had, just two weeks ago, I believe, the, the draft of the study by the FCS group, Redman, Water, Sewer, Rates, and Fees. And tonight, there'll be further discussion after I pick up and go about where the council may go on related taxes that directly impact the general fund. So we have a utility function and a general fund function here in terms of revenue enhancements. And last is, we're encouraging you to strongly look at and focus on how to grow the community. In doing all this work, we reviewed the council strategic goals that are up right up there on the, on the previous slide, and we kept them in mind during the work that we did. Now, some observations. Not contained in the report. Shelton Community and you as their elected representatives are not experiencing financial challenges for the first time. It's happened very tiny before. Shelton is not alone. The cost to continue a business are up. Well, revenues to meet those challenges are down. And this is for all local governments in the state of Washington. Shelton, I will add, has a positive history of addressing financial and other community challenges. I'll call your attention to pages three through four of the report, where some of those are listed. It was really good for me to go back to and review those. Those are our great accomplishments that have taken place in this community. As noted earlier, this is not the first time the Shelton community and selected officials have faced financial challenges. Further flesh out the magnitude of the challenge, please consider this. It is a multi-year problem. It took several years to get to this point. It would take several years to move beyond it. Immediate and several-year challenges are described by one of our participants as being a two comma issue. Seven point, a million to nine million dollars. If you take all the things that your community as a whole must and says they want to do, whether it's a park or recreation or trails or public safety or transportation infrastructure, that actually may become instead of a seven-digit number, an eight-digit number. The challenge is not small, but it's also not daunting. I will add that the community poverty rate of twenty-four point five percent gives pause, but also makes the need to address the challenges now. Do not, please do not kick this can down the road. You don't have, my final observations, you don't have much room to do further program reductions. Each and every one of the task force members recognize you have a pretty lean operation in your municipal operations. There's not much more you can do there. Now for specific recommendations, pages five to eight of the report. The group put this together and decided to, to look at several ways, by one category, who advantages it, what group controls the decisions, the impact, high, medium, and low, and the goal length term, including time to take to address it. I'm going to focus tonight for simplicity on the impact, which in that little table beginning on the bottom of page five would be the fourth column over from the left, starts off the plan. So quick examples here because I, I think you're going to need time to read this and digest it and reflect on it. And then as a group, together with your staff, determine where you want to go from there. But in terms of impact significance, here are three instant examples. I work with the county to examine a public safety sales tax, which is a positive way to address criminal and civil justice costs. That is actually something that was considered briefly through your public safety dispatch center. It is not going on the ballot in this calendar year. I'll step aside of my role as a task force member here and observe if this is going to pass county-wide. You all need to get organized like the school do, and spend several months talking about the problems, the opportunities, and what an addition that will do for the communities, the greater Shelton community and Shelton itself. Went down and picked another one from the, the moderate or median category. Says reduced infrastructure or device divested buildings not specifically used for city purposes. That's nice language for you own a library, you own a historical museum, and you own a fire station. But not necessarily at this point direct city services. And the group is encouraging you as one of your cost reduction items to consider divesting yourself those, turn them over to the organization to occupy them. Some are governments, some are, are five oh one corporation. And move on. And last but not least, low, low priority one is considering increasing rates for out-of-city water customers. Sample though for their explanation needed. These are drawn from the report by me, just as representative examples of ways to address the financial and operational challenges. They are not all encompassing. The list is much longer than three. The entire report, I encourage you to digest them entirely in the understanding of what we looked at on your behalf. And also look at the several paths we recommended you consider going forward. The challenge, my friends, is yours. The task force members offered our report for your consideration. We thank you and the city manager for the opportunity to serve. And we know in closing, together, together, we can move Shelton forward to being the place that wants to continue to live, to work, and to play. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think a lot of, as I mentioned, the recommendations, we had begun to undertake some of those. Certainly, as you look down the list, you'll see that many of the things, I mean, as we were talking about, I was talking about with someone earlier today, the updated website and how that offers really some potential time-saving to both our community members, but also our staff, as people are able to do business a little bit easier on access city services that way. So a lot of these things are ongoing and and happening. I think I just want to thank the task force because they really did give a lot of guidance to city staff and just thank my colleagues who also participated in this because each department had presented at a meeting and did a great job really informing the task force of what they do and, and really how complex a city is. Some of them already knew that, but others, I think, came to realize that what we do with the really lean staff already is pretty amazing. So, thank you.
If there are questions, I can answer them, Mr. Mayor. As long as they are directed in terms of the big focus of the entire task force, I won't get into my personal pets.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have. The last statement you made about the use of water, what was that?
Consider charging people who live outside the city limits a different, frankly, higher rate for water. It's being done in other cities of the state.
I think the majority of those customers are government as well. So.
Any more questions, Pete?
Thank you, Pete, and the entire task force for your hard work and dedication and.
I have communication with each and every one of them, pass that on. Okay. My best wishes to you all. It's not easy. I, for those who don't know, I both sat at this table in this room and on your side of the table on the floor. So it's not going to be easy, but it's challenges we're given.
Just wanted to take another quick second, though, for you, for you, Bill. You didn't, you didn't notice in your investigation and going through this, there wasn't some chunk of money sitting somewhere in the couch cushions and getting soft or anything like that, right? You know, we, it sounds like you guys did a very thorough job. There's there isn't, there isn't anything out there that we're.
We did rent our gold detectors and walk around City Hall and get the city buried out there.
So that's very, very pleased to hear that, and I appreciate the transparency from staff and working with you guys. Again, thank you all for your, your time. I know there's plenty of other things I'm sure you keep from doing, but we appreciate the help. So I just wanted to thank you.
All right. Good night, all.
Thank you, thank you.
So to continue on with really, as you know where we're at and both looking at where the two thousand and twenty-three budget is and where two thousand and twenty-four takes us, you, there's a subcommittee of yourselves that are now formed, a council, a city council finance subcommittee that has, Mark and I have met with you once. We have a couple of more meetings on the schedule and you've given us direction. I highlighted three bullets here. Focus on core services. Keep the strategic goals in mind with intentional decision-making. I think you know very intimately what our challenges are with all we have to offer as a city within the constraints of our revenue stream, in particular in the general fund. We made some reductions to the two thousand and twenty-three budget. I wanted to point those out. We reduced over eighty-one thousand dollars in supplies and professional services. Those are a permanent reduction that carry forward into two thousand and twenty-four. And then we eliminated three positions formally at that mid-year June supplemental budget. I think, as you know, that's not been easy. It's put other, it's put duties on other people. We feel it every day. I think we're trying our, our, our very best to mitigate that to the public and continue serving them. Me and I'm speaking in particular at the customer service desk because when people do come in, they need to do business with us, pay their bills, interact with city staff in other departments. So we're doing our, our best, but there are times it's challenging. We've reduced hours. We continue to make some reductions in three other positions that were both budgeted or not. So that's a total of six positions in that have been eliminated. So I think we've done some really hard work because it's not easy in getting our costs to come in line more, as I pointed out in monthly financial reports, that those expenditures to come in line with our revenue, and that's really the challenge because that revenue doesn't go up at a rate that the expenses increase. So we're also continuing to save in this year's budget wherever we can in the area of supplies and services, which takes us really into looking at, okay, so realistically, where is two thousand and twenty-three headed? Because we have to look at where two thousand and twenty-three is going to end as we start to build into two thousand and twenty-four because that ending fund balance is critical for us. So on this example here, I've done my very best to give us a realistic look at where revenues and expenditure should come in. Still doing everything that you set really as priorities and goals in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. And I think in in particular, you know, I'm talking about an increased amount for the jails services. But in realistic terms, where do I see us ending the year, still being able to support that for the next four months of the year and kind of where we're at? So right now, our estimated fund balance puts us over the target, the policy target that you set for us of twenty percent of budgeted expenditures by nine hundred thousand dollars. So what we're looking at as city staff with that is really that some one-time money that we could use for some expenses and included in the material stuff, that was a long list that department leadership came up with as these are some things that I don't even know in most cases that they're nice to have. They're deferred maintenance, they're added technology, or I should say, not even added technology, replacing aging technology, replacing, you know, the example that I hold on to is we have a fleet of seventeen police vehicles. And if we, you know, we put in here to replace one, you know, that means that those are, if we just replace one a year, they're seventeen years old. Those are heavily used vehicles that are a priority for us as a community to have our first responders in in good vehicles. So that's not even really meeting what I would say is something that I would like it to be more. We'd like a lot to be more in this, but we have this one-time money that we can use towards some targeted areas. And I think that's our task. That's what we have to keep our eye on that. You know, gosh, wouldn't it be great to bring back a couple of the positions that we eliminated, but we just can't do that. This isn't ongoing money that allows us to do that. It's certainly also, I want to emphasize, not found money. Nowhere in this was this expected, but due to our diligence, we brought it to a place where I think we can do what we intend and need to do as a city for the rest of two thousand and twenty-three and still end up in, in a financial position that's that. It might be slightly more, it might be slightly less. I think it's going to be around nine hundred thousand dollars that we're over that policy. And, you know, let me share with you that when we really adopted the two thousand and twenty-three budget last fall, my concern was, well, if we have to dip into reserves because we knew we wanted to for chill costs, we have to also figure out a way to pay back that twenty percent because we need to be at that level. Because you wisely said it. I fully embrace that we have that twenty percent for emergencies, for downturns in the economy, so we can keep our services at a level that we need to. So being slightly above that is great. I certainly am glad we're at least at that twenty percent policy. So, or, or at that target in our budget. I'll pause there because I want Mark to have a chance, and I know it's harder when you're remote to be able to jump in. So I don't know if you wanted to add anything at this point, Mark?
I think the next slide shows some of those requests, right, Mike?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, so.
Some of the highlights of.
Yeah, so this is just a highlight of requests, and what we've asked staff to do is provide their needs. A lot of these aren't necessarily wants, but these are, these are ongoing needs, as Mike referred to deferred maintenance, replacement of aging equipment. Throughout many funds, we, we tallied about seventeen million dollars worth of requests for two thousand and twenty-four. And you'll see that in your packet, and the intent isn't to. And uh you'll see that in your packet. And the intent isn't to um had. What are what our needs are. The the intent is to accurately display. Actually, what we're facing um here on a daily basis. And so you'll see a few of these. And they totaled the nine hundred thousand dollars Mike just indicated, which probably isn't prudent to spend all that down in twenty twenty four. Um in order to maintain some reserves as we see as we move into closer to twenty five. But you'll see that one patrol vehicle. IT equipment replacement, aging laptops. Um we have an aging uh. In uninterrupted power supply here in the civic center needs to be addressed. There's the abatement fund that I know that's been a priority. Um but as Director Hill told me just the other day, there's six burnt. Um structures in town. Uh and so even with fully funding essentially this. Um well, I guess it's not fully funded because it would address five of the six structures if we actually went through abatement on this project. So. I think this list is just representative of what we're dealing with right now. Obviously, the the multimodal. Trail isn't necessarily a um critical public um service. But those are the types of. Projects and amenities that uh make Shelton a better place to live. Uh so you uh it's not like, it's not like police and water and sewer services, but I I think they're just as important or just down the list of important. Um to uh some of those, some of those services. So I think that's, this is a pretty good representation of uh what we're uh seeing from each department.
And we certainly weren't looking for you necessarily. To have to tell us, well, we want you to do these things, but we wanted you to be aware of just in really, I think what. The rest of the directors did was, well, these would be things that are priorities, but we know that. The current state of the budget can't fit them in, but they're needed. And. It and I think it's always amazing how, when I looked at that slide before and I see. Wow, we're over policy by nine hundred thousand dollars. It goes really quickly when you start putting just a few things to it and it's gone. And it would be, I think. Ideal if we indeed could have a little bit of it left, but. There's a lot of critical infrastructure that needs to be replaced. And I think through the presentation tonight, we are going to be looking. For you to give us some direction so that we can um on a pretty tight timeline now, get a budget put together. That comes to you in October that represents um you know. The entire budget package is over forty million dollars. So we have a lot of work to do and we want to make sure we're headed in the right direction that. You want us to go in. Mark, did you want to talk about um? Since the animal shelter roof is on this list, um the animal shelter to get some direction on that at this time?
He yeah, I think there's a couple uh things to address. I think I'll go back and I think it's important to recognize that uh. That nine oh seven does not fund the street fund. And just to reiterate that, so at six hundred and what's what was our budget this year, Mike? Six?
The transfer all over six hundred thousand from.
Over six hundred thousand, yeah, transfer the street fund. So that that takes that nine oh seven uh down significantly. Um. There are opportunities to fund that out of the transportation benefit district for maintenance and operations if the council so choo so chose. So we're interested in um. Getting some some direction there. Uh the animal uh control slash shelter services RFP. Um deadline passed without any submittals from any interested parties. Um Director Hill has provided me with help from the police department. Oh, let's see. Um police had nearly four hundred animal control calls last year and two hundred and sixty to date this year. Uh so we have a, there's a need in the community. I think there's an expectation. It's just what what the level of service uh. Is the appetite for providing that service from the council and um how we're going to um. Maybe uh mitigate the cost of that service with some other partnerships that might be out there that we need to foster with uh Mason County. Or kitten rescue or um the um. Main society of Mason County and some of those other organizations that weren't quite ready to take on that service in the community, but um. They certainly have needs for housing animals. And with our recent fee schedule update to address animal uh. Control and shelter services, I think it uh may might get us into a better position to offset some of those costs that are ongoing. And uh will be occurring in the future. Kind of the third um topic is the recent um. Formation of the subcommittee on um homelessness. I and the work that that subcommittee is doing and anticipation for some recommendations coming from that that uh. You know. I would imagine would have some some costs associated with whatever uh proactive um opportunities. Uh that are put forward to the full council. Um those might not be new FTEs, but um as we have talked. And has the um as Pete uh certainly mentioned, we are, we are running a lean ship. And adding uh some of these services onto existing staff has an impact to our existing services. And it does have a cost at the end of the day, right? Um it might have a cost in employee turnover, um fatigue. Uh and liability and things like that. So we need to be really conscious of how uh how we add services and are strategic in that manner.
So I think we're looking for some direction at this point because we are at that pivotal point with the budget. That directors need to be able to know. Um if if there. If indeed your desire, I think, is for us to include um the animal shelter in the general fund budget. And proceed with that. Am I headed in the right way, Mark?
Yeah, I am. And and I guess for clarity, it it's still in there. We um. Obviously, we had, we we had, we had an animal, we had slashed code enforcement animal control officers previously. Um we've essentially split those up to focus one position on code enforcement. The other position is open. It's filled by a temporary position to manage the shelter at this point. So it's it's in the budget currently. It could be filled. Um if we um continued operating those services.
The the street preservation project. Why couldn't we use the TBD for that? The match, yes, the three fifty one. Did that come out of TBD? Okay, so this is not general, all general fund money.
Not necessarily in its entirety. I think the this is, this is a broader view of the needs.
And with your guidance of um. And I think the for the rest of council, the um. Council subcommittee really gave us an indication that you were open to us using TBD towards um. Maintenance and operations. So if that's a direction that you're comfortable with, we'll build a budget that includes that. But we wanted again some consensus and it feels like you're supportive of that. Um we certainly in our budget presentation will show you where we're estimating that ending fund balance and TBD to be that it's. Um got the capacity to do that. We continue to bring in revenues from that. And so. Director Harris and his staff have worked with finance and will get that estimate out so that it does indeed include that. We included the replacement of the um animal shelter roof, assuming as um. Mark mentioned, the current estimates for budget include all the um operations for the animal shelter. But we felt like we needed George. Um if if it's something you don't want us to include. Or you want us to include it in a different way, we needed some direction soon. So that as we build the budget that comes to you in October, we're bringing you what you want to see. So that's why that's included on there. So.
Well, I I I I mean, I'm absolutely in agreement. The abatement fund needs to be funded. I mean, we have not funded it for several years. I I I believe that we should continue with our our patrol car replacement. I think we've got what, four or five now that are two years old? And the rest are. In ancient history.
But they put a lot of miles on quickly. Those, you know, they're. Well-used vehicles, but and we want them to be, and we want them to be new and fresh.
When do we replace patrol cars?
Currently? We don't have any set aside money for it. It's been, um I mean, the chief can help me. I think we found a good deal. Through some partner agencies and stuff like you.
We were budgeted to do four new patrol cars last year. Uh we were gonna get Tacos. Uh they were a little more expensive than the Explorers. Um that they explored, the towers weren't available. So we went with the Explorers. They were a little bit cheaper. So we were able to actually buy five. Brand new cars last year. Um and then we got a great deal from this Fox and tried for three used vehicles. That were fully outfitted. This one at one would normally cost us what we bought, paid for three. So it has brought down our mileage on our cars. Significantly, but uh like Mike said, we've put a lot of miles on those cars on a regular basis and. Uh we don't drive them like we're driving the Stasi around. You know, they they drive up pretty fast. They're avoiding calls and. And such. There's a lot of wear and tear uh on those vehicles. So uh replacement it ends up being pretty critical very quickly.
But we've replaced half of our fleet the last year.
Um but three of those were used cars. So the ones from Spox and generally used, but still used cars. So. On our mileage for vehicles, when I first started here, we were looking at vehicles. The average police car in my fleet had over a hundred thousand miles on it. So in twenty twenty one, our average was a hundred thousand miles. Now it's lower than that. I can get that number for you. But if we don't put something in place where we're defining when we're gonna replace those cars, we run the risk of any of there again where our fleet is at a hundred thousand miles.
That's exactly where I was going with it. So um if you want me to support replacing patrol cars immediately, like some life expectancy information and utilization of what we currently have.
Okay.
Just to make sure we're using everything to the max. Um. The items on the list, you know, if it's IT equipment, the civic center UPS, like to me, that's kind of no brainer stuff. Like replace the old laptops and replace the UPS, but. Um I'm not so sure how I feel about the museum at this point. Um I would like to see the abatement fund add a hundred thousand dollars to that. I'm throwing a swag out there. But I think we're well overdue to abate some properties, well overdue. And we need the capital to do that. And I think ultimately the abatement fund should diminish over time in a way because.
We've handled it.
Yeah, right? Maybe.
And we recoup the money when.
Yeah, right? Like over time, we should kind of get paid back. But I think we need to kind of set a course here in the next couple of years. Um got a new code enforcement officer. Um I would like to give that individual some tools to make some stuff happen. Um and I think that's one avenue. Sidewalks, street preservation, the multimodal path. Uh I gotta attack that from other avenues at this point, probably defer um personally. Um I would love to. Sink sink a bunch of cash into uh into our streets, but. I kind of, again, I need some. What are we paving and why and when and that kind of. You know, direction on that. And obviously, we got Wallace C Street right in L.A. and we got a project there. Um is that project? That particular project already in motion? Are we? Have we already applied for that grant?
So uh the transportation program board, we uh sent an application to the two weeks ago. Uh the application has been received by them and uh they typically uh will get back to us sometime in November, December. And then we actually don't get the funding to get work until next spring. But proposing if it is funded, um which the road is pretty deteriorated. Um it is in severe need of maintenance. Right now, we can, I can see that grinding and lay on it. Where we take out a couple inches and then end like back in half fall. Um if we go another year or two, it will probably be a whole thing out.
Yeah.
And at that point, it's two to three X of what the estimated cost is right now. So uh anyways, so we're hopeful. But we'll get that. Uh there's eighteen dollars uh for the application. And uh so that's what the budget will show. Uh there was three hundred thousand dollars in the twenty twenty three budget already for it. We were not awarded last year's application. We have higher votes this year. Um we're putting in additional funds in the twenty twenty four budget to secure a match. Um the maintenance costs actually went up significantly. The cost estimates just one year that the pavement is getting ripped apart. And it affects its day to day work and power and all more. Um you know, fixing holes in the road, that sort of thing.
I think I've noticed that, especially on that section of road. It's impossible to see. Never mind, disregard, sorry.
I boom sidewalk replacement program, some bad cracks out there. That someone catches their foot down and go, we're in trouble. So that's kind of. Very important thing to me. At the sidewalks.
I'm okay with everything on this list except for maybe the museum H-back. I think that's something we can defer because it's all less traveled space, but we should, we should. Go ahead with the electrical. Cause I know about old wiring. So um but I I appreciate the city putting, getting this list and. Um these are priorities that I think are needed and that we need to um support and update. What we don't have is a little bit of something that we can keep us going till our next. Um but a little bit of something that we can. Keep us moving like, hey, we're still, we're still in the fight. So. I I I I agree with almost everything on this list except for maybe the H-back.
Yeah, and I mean, we're gonna be talking in the future here about turning these, some of these businesses over to the nonprofits that. So. They can repair themselves.
That being said, you know, we have a conversation about, we're not taking on, you know, state or other assets until they're brought up to current standards. And I, as the museum, if I were them, I wouldn't want to be taking on a building that had that kind of um substantial updates needing to be done. Um that being the case, there's still may be some other opportunities um to look at pers- historic preservation funds or things we may don't partner with them on. Because it obviously needs to be taken care of. Um there's a reason it's on this list. And I think like a lot of other things in the city, we've our deferred maintenance. It's gotten pretty long um as we've tried to kind of patch things through and, you know, keep things moving forward. So. You know, if the reality is we're looking to divest that structure, I think we're gonna have to make sure that it's in a shape they're willing to take it on.
Log the power. I can, I I I understand that, but the H-back is working and. Replacing it and then giving the building. I don't know if that's a. Mike, you know, nine hundred, so estimating nineteen hundred, nine hundred sixteen thousand dollar-ish. To the good. Um I gotta throw it in here, but we're gonna have a winner. And we're gonna have some unforeseen costs. So you know, over the course of November, December. Um I want to probably be a little bit more conservative with how much of that we do spend, understanding rolling into next year. It's even bleaker in terms of revenue and down down the line. So that's sometimes the thing that gets lost in this. It's like, oh, we had nine hundred thousand dollars. We're in good shape. But um go back to the longer term projections and it's compounding issues. So I'd like to try to keep a little bit of a pad in there. At the same time, I think you heard from me, um the abatement fund to be bolstered. I would support that. And I would support, you know, the. Stuff that's thirty, forty thousand or less, um getting that taken care of, the bigger projects and just be more discussion on those projects. To just ensure that those projects are gonna. I mean, not to be selfish about it, but it's not gonna bring revenue back to general fund in some way, shape or form or support that. It's kind of hard to god. Focus it there, right? So um.
I think you've given us some good direction on. Kind of what these one time expenditures should be focused on with your. Um thoughts and ideas. Um I was, I will tell you, I feel pretty sure in my estimate being. Conservative to take into account um even. Um increased jail costs. Um should we have an early winter event or any kind of? You know, I can't, obviously, if it's a half a million dollar failure, it's something I'm not. That's not in part of the strategy, but I think I feel confident in nine hundred thousand dollars. If, you know, if anything, it could come in a little bit higher. And then that will give us uh point to be able to plan for either setting that aside for future capital or other types of fees.
I feel one more thing here, Michael. I do appreciate that. I know staff's really in tune with how to leverage these dollars to really make them stretch. And I think when we're talking about. And I think when we're talking about things like I T equipment and. Things, the tools that our our team needs to do their jobs. Yes, there's that one time cost, but hopefully what we're seeing and that is. It's uh taking some of the pressure off of what you're doing and it's not patching through four different pieces of equipment that you're trying to. You know, max keep working and patching and and working through. It's not a good use of your time and it's not going to get us where we need to be long term. So I think that. The focus towards asset management that I'm seeing throughout all of this. I'm really pleased to see that direction. I know it's it's really difficult given what we inherited.
It is. And I think I know, um, when Chief Beeson and I looked at just replacing some of the. You know, police laptops, it's making sure that they have efficient equipment that helps them get the job done. And that's the same for all city staff. It's everyone's doing more. They need the equipment to do the job well so that it's uh efficient sometime. So we'll continue that focus.
Do you, sorry, the, we did get a really great presentation from Enterprise earlier in the year and there was significant cost savings over the long, short. Term cost savings that were significant. Um, what was the, refresh me on, what was the buy in on that?
Um, I think without um our police fleet, it was about a hundred and thirty thousand a year. And I think I know Mark and I have that in our minds as. Um, depending on kind of as we get into this presentation a little bit more and what we might do with some leveraging of revenue options for the general fund. That might be something that certainly goes along with one of your goals and I think. Our goal as city staff, which is to preserve our assets and that's in the vehicles. And we have a fleet, um. Outside of public safety that needs to be um invested in. So we can uh look at that as. Maybe. We look at this forecast. So as we project out the twenty twenty four um budget. Taking where we're estimating twenty three to end as a beginning balance. Looking at our revenue and I want to point out that our revenue is. So much closer to where our expenditures are for twenty twenty four without, um, really. We've got a little bit of work to do and not. Saying that two hundred thousand dollars isn't a lot to find to carve out of our budget, but it's much closer. Um, it's putting the city in a position where it can sustain it now. Our revenue doesn't grow. As fast as our expenses do, and that's true for, um. Most cities in the state where. We're hemmed in by some of the limitations in the one percent increase to property tax. And as you know, our sales tax base is what it is. It's just not going to grow substantially to cut, to support. Um, and increase a dramatic increase to city services. So when I estimated the revenue for twenty twenty four. That's assuming the one percent increase to property tax, but that is taking absolutely no increase to sales tax. It's keeping it right where it is. Um, in estimating that the economy is gonna hang there kind of where it is and looking at, you know, what everything's indicating. That's where I left that. I, um, brought B N O tax in line with kind of where I'm assuming it's going to be. Um, just to give you, kind of hope I didn't leave my B N O tax notes. No, I didn't. Okay. So we budgeted just over a million dollars for B N O tax in twenty twenty four. As I pointed out in uh monthly financial reports, one of our largest. Um, payers of B N O tax, um, their profits came down a bit after um the pandemic. And so that. Estimate that is more real is that it, our B N O taxes at. The current rate, it would be about eight hundred thousand dollars a year. So about two hundred thousand dollars less. I took that into account in building the twenty twenty four budget. So I feel like the revenue is really in line with what we're actually going to bring in. It's not inflated in any way. It's not. It's real. I don't really see it um being far off that. With the expenses, we've estimated, um. Our labor costs for um all of our employee groups that have negotiated agreements next year. We've done, uh. Um, as best we can estimating where benefits will be as well as our liability insurance. Um, we had, um, you know, we have more information on that now, so I can speak a little bit more with. Um, less crystal ball on those that that are coming in within what we're budgeting. So the expenses are really. Pretty real also. I don't see that they're going to go dramatically. As I sit here today, I don't think they're going to go up or down dramatically as much as I know right now they are what they are. So for twenty twenty four. We still need to look at that expense budget and carve out about two hundred thousand dollars, which isn't going to be easy. But that's what our jobs are. Looking at twenty twenty five. And taking a realistic look at where revenues would be, again, keeping everything the same except a one percent increase on property tax. Assuming the economy stays right where it is and property values don't really. Rise or fall, they stay right about level. That's where the revenue is and then forecasting as best I can a very modest growth on our expenses, which would be mostly employee costs. Quite frankly, I'm not increasing anything else. That puts us at about just over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in um expenses exceeding revenue. And that's the difficulty we face without any kind of a revenue increase. And for the rest of council, the subcommittee really kind of. Looked at this at our first meeting at. What, you know, what can we do? Because there aren't many things that you as city council can act on that really can raise the revenue. We're pretty much there. As a city, we've leveraged most of the taxes we can. Not all cities. Um, use B N O tax as a revenue source. Shell does. Um, we're not at the statutory limit on that though. So that's a place where we could, um. Increase and um bring some revenue into the general fund that can maintain all of the critical services that we support through it. There. And I think that this is another. Um, place where we're looking for your direction so that we know how to build this budget. Because I know Mark and I have shared with, um. The subcommittee and probably others that be one on one. We don't want to be at a place in mid twenty twenty four where we're having to make cuts again. That's. That doesn't. Do us any good and it puts us behind in all the projects that we're doing. So we want to. Know that we're planning twenty twenty four with an eye on twenty twenty five. And I think that really dictates if we're not going to increase the revenue. It dictates how we use that one time money, because if we're not going to increase our revenue source, then we should. I would advocate send some of that one time money aside to take that bite out of where we're projecting. Twenty twenty five to be, because that's. We've, I'm just going to tell you as what you already know and on the record, we've reduced. And squeezed about as much as I can see we can to continue providing services at the level we're at. And I think my colleagues with, um. Hopefully are nodding behind me. There's not much else we can do just to to reduce this. Um, really anymore without affecting critical services. So. I think that's the next place we're looking for some direction and um to give us to build the twenty twenty four and really beyond budget is. Are you, um, comfortable and interested in us bringing you a recommendation for. An increase to the business and occupation tax and have more information, I should say, brought to you, um, regarding that. That I cover that, Mark. I'll pause there so you have a chance.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Uh, I think. I think the. The only kind of direction or remaining direction that I'd like. Prior to this revenue discussion would be street fund. Um, I don't think we've heard kind of a direction. Uh, from council yet or consensus from council whether, um. To support street maintenance operations through the T B D at, and that could be at different levels, right? It could be. Of the six hundred not thousand dollars. It could be fifty percent of that or twenty percent of that are fully funded. To help, um. Address that in fund balance, but. Um, again, that. T B D um funding source expires in twenty twenty six, so that's not necessarily a long term solution as well, but. If if the council has ideas there, um, I'd like to hear that.
Well, I don't think we have a choice this year or next year. I think we probably should just for maintenance operation. Or half of that maybe. The other half for matching funds for grants.
Does the sidewalk replacement program is that, can we do deep? Can we leverage the money out?
Yes.
Out of the T B D. T B D.
I think we can, definitely. Yeah. Yeah, I mostly use some real estate access tax funds. Uh, downtown sidewalks, commercial districts, that sort of thing.
I'm very concerned about the sidewalks and the. Racks and the.
It's a risk.
It's a very high risk. Yeah.
And I know that one of the hopes on T V D went into effect when to be able to pave some of the things we hadn't gotten to, but the fact that we have to take care of what we have. Or it's going to be more expensive down the road. So I think shifting some of those dollars in maintenance operations makes sense at this point. Um, but again, talking about where we can match those dollars up. And I do agree, we need to continue to push A W C and our partners across the state. To have that policy looked at at a statewide level without extending the T B D. Um. That's something that has been kind of on our radar, but not something that we've really pushed hard. And I imagine if we are. Running into that because everyone's seeing their one percent per year go up and their costs are going up much more than one percent per year. Um, that's an area where, you know, roads need attention and people can see the direct correlation. And it makes a lot of sense for me for us to focus there.
Did you check? I think I asked you that the T V D could be extended, um, if there's debt associated to it. Is that councilmatic or voter?
So. I did research. So first of all, T V D can be extended because we haven't yet as a. City, so it can go to the voters to be extended for ten years. If debt is associated with it, it would need to be a part of what we send on the ballot to the voters. So that would have to be. Established. At that time, so we need to.
Correct.
Have that as a part of the package we send to the voters. I think the T V D expires in April of twenty twenty six if I'm correct, so we need to position ourselves to put that on the ballot at. Such a point. And we haven't. Looked at that, but to make sure that it was in there. And then if the debt's in there, it's disclosed to the voters and.
And that's obviously a risk, right? If if you go to the voters with uh with that debt and and that measure fails. Um, you have to pay that debt off as a general fund.
And what about the Simpson River Road multi, our road? That's kind of a. That kind of a thing that could wait?
That's what they're asking us, Ken.
Certainly.
Yes.
Could wait. Okay.
I I think I've heard from a couple of you anyway that you're. That maintaining our current assets are a priority. Obviously, that's part of our strategic goals. And that the utilization of T V D funds to. Excuse me, continue to do that. Is something you would consider. So uh as staff, why don't we? Come together and uh and bring a proposal forward that certainly does that and find a, find a, um. Find a, I want, I want to say happy medium, but fi- find a, a. A program, a funding program for our streets, uh for maintenance operations that, um. That lowers the burden a bit on the general fund. Uh, and distribute some of that to the T V D, um, and keeps, keeps that fund. Um, at a level where we can effectively maintain our assets, um, and and not allow them to continue to deteriorate.
But I suggest that we look at. Possibilities of a B N O tax increase and also what would the amount of money be if we raised the property and. The M S tax, how much money would be raised if that happened? And then the aspirational, I'm like, oh, if you raise it one percent, we could have this many vehicles. We can have this many, um. Uh, mitigation sites, we can have this many, um, or re- reallocate some of the, not mitigation sites, but, uh. But redoing, uh. The the land that. And also, uh, what, what money could we get from an increased B N O tax and from whom? Cause if twenty four percent of us are living in poverty, then, um, how are we gonna squeeze out more taxes from from per book? So. Considering all those things, but I'd like to see options.
Sure.
And if that would be, then give us some aspirations like, okay, what can we do if we did increase the tax, not just say, don't know taxes altogether. You know, what could we do to repair or refund or do some deferred maintenance on the projects we've already started?
So we did build the twenty four budget, assuming that we would take the one percent increase. On property tax. And that's a very small amount of money, I will tell you, but. It's something.
Like twenty thousand.
Certainly not small with the property, but it's.
And also in S M T B D park levy or, you know, all, all the different levies. Like, what if we raise all the levies to the maximum extent?
So you're talking about a levy little.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I think we do have to be really thoughtful. One of the things we talked about at the, at the subcommittee level was. You know, how are we balancing what we need to fund within the city with what people have a capacity to afford? And we've had this conversation with water sewer as well, um, you know. I think we've looked at how growth plays into that, but there's a cost to that as well and making sure we're set up for that. If we don't have the water tank to give the capacity to build new houses. You know, that's where in my mind, we need to be investing our dollars for long term. Um, the one percent property tax levy, that is what it is. Like, we're not getting anything else there. Um, but one thing that's really hard is we keep going back. And and raising everything because we haven't wanted to before. And so now we're facing again. We're increasing rates, we're increasing costs. And if we're looking at the B N O tax, I mean, business is. Burdened in a different way than residences are. And so how do we balance that to make sure that everyone's. Fairly playing, paying in to reach those city services. And so. While I I'm not necessarily opposed to a B N O tax increase, looking at the financial cliff that we're, we're experiencing, um. I I don't think it's as simple as just saying. Let's double it, let's triple it, let's.
Right.
Let's max it out because quite frankly, I don't think that our community can afford it.
And then you have to consider businesses that are potentially looking at our community and will this drive them away?
In some cases, we know the costs are passed on to the consumer.
On a B N O presentation, can we get some other cities on?
Certainly, some comparisons, um, you know, there's. Um, without, there's only so much you can do as council and then it would have to go to the voters in researching it. Most. Um, cities aren't above the statutory unless it was set that way before it came into law. So we'll get you that. Um, I have some calculations on, you know, a graduated sort of increase. So, but you know, I mean, just by looking as Mark's hinted at before, the budget, you know, that we expect is about eight hundred thousand. So if we double the B N O tax rate, it's gonna be about double that. So, you know. If we did half as much, it would be half that amount. So those are kind of where we're standing in it. Standing at right now. So that, you know, there's nothing magical about any kind of calculation I'm gonna do. It's about eight hundred thousand dollars. If you double it, it's about four hundred thousand dollars if you did half as much.
But there's a sweet spot where people will say, oh, if that fee's too high. I'm just not gonna pay it at all and try to dodge it. Or there's a sweet spot where that's just enough where I can accept that and do it as a cost of business. And I think there's a, there's a space where we can capture that and not be too high, whereas we're driving away business, but whereas we're, we're still getting. On volume, picking up a little bit here and there.
Oh, I mean, we, we could do B N O as on a scale of different kind of businesses, but I'm telling you, as a small business owner, B N O tax isn't very much. I mean, I would do a hundred thousand dollars in site sales at Hillcrest and that was costing me sixty bucks a month. So I could pay a hundred and twenty bucks a month. That would, that wouldn't hurt me. For small businesses, it's not gonna make a big difference. It's for the bigger businesses, biggest retailers around that were. It's gonna make a difference and I don't know if they care.
So our categories are manufacturing, retail, services and wholesale. And in Shelton, they're all at the same rate. So cities vary that, but we'll get you the comparison of all cities in Washington that. Have a B N O tax and how it's structured. Um, we'll get that out to you.
Who's exempt from it and who's not? That would be also, no, um, because I'm not sure this council has any, had any conversations about exempting anybody from B N O tax. Based on the conversations tonight, I'd also like to consider. In the work plan for the city manager for twenty twenty four to implement and develop a level of service. To implement and develop a level of service standard that we can start to work with and debate. Uh, my fears are, you know, just being blunt about it, um, we're not gonna solve this problem through tax increases either. And we're gonna have to do level of service reductions in twenty twenty four, twenty five, probably up to twenty seven uh to fully recover. Um, and the council needs to be able to debate that intelligently, so uh we need to get as much information on what are, are the. City services that we cannot. Ignore, it's a good way to put it maybe, or cannot defer, um, obviously, you know, we need to be able to sanitize our wastewater and. Drink clean water and provide public safety um and do business, but we need to fully understand what reductions in those services would equate to. Uh, and whether or not we consider fully funding those services moving forward. Uh, frankly, I'm just honest, being honest about it, it's just, I don't, I don't see this in time uh catching up uh with some of these changes.
I mean, I think I heard tonight that we can't do any more reductions than anything we've done, as much reductions as we can do, so I don't.
Well, I think we, we've heard from stuff that they, I mean, people wise, like we are as mean as we can be. But that's why we've gone to things like reducing number of hours the customer service is open, so like, what's the trade up? And I think to Joe's point, being able to clearly articulate that to the community, like, because of the current financial situation. This is what you can expect so that we don't have people frustrated on either side of the counter about what we as a city are or are not able to offer. And I think it's really important that we have metrics to be able to measure that, because right now it's very anecdotal. What would, what was it like for you? What does that look like? Um, and I think also looking for creative solutions, like we've talked about, why are people visiting the customer service desk? Well, they're paying with cash. Okay, well, do we have a kiosk that can accept cash outside of those hours? Like, how can we still meet people where they are, provide what they need, but in a way that isn't costing us in the way it is now? And then be able to measure that. That fair?
And, and I fully understand in some cases, being a semi staff, we are is actually costing us more money.
Mm-hmm.
Right, inefficient, right? Uh, customer service functions are more leaning towards self-service, um, so, you know, I understand collecting cash. But again, that may be something you have to decide to be not accept that anymore and to be pushed towards for self-service, because it's gonna save a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. You know, those are the things I need to fully understand, and then as we move into twenty four, um, uh, it's not fair to try this now. But I think again, we need to look at kind of that scorecard of city services, and right now it feels like we're pushed to deliver everything at an A. Level of service, um, when we can really probably only get four C. Um, so being able to, and I was just shooting the hip, that's not based on anything specific, but it's just, you know what I'm saying? It's for us to be able to say, you know, hey, you know, uh. This activity, you know, nets about this amount of money a year, cutting it fifty percent is gonna look at like this. Uh, you know, the other challenge with all of this too is just with the way we're structured. You know, it gets down to staffing levels, staff, especially between public works and other general fund. Um, those positions are shared positions, so making a cut in one area is gonna affect two or three others, so. Um, again, those are things that we need to be able to fully understand and grapple with next year. Appreciate all the hard work, though, it's, you know, not fun, uh. I think, you know, that's the other thing too, is we all come into this role expecting to make change in the positive direction until we learn that. There's no cash to do that, um, so I'd be wonderful to dig out of this rut. So we can start taking on the things that we really wanna try to fix, so.
Uh, council, if you don't mind, um, when we're talking about the B and O tax increases, is it important to recognize specific programs? That, that, well, maybe any, any revenue increase would address. Um, or is it, are you inclined just to, as much as we've talked about tonight? Eh, anything in the general fund and general services, um, because as we, as we talk about. Further reductions, uh, uh, re- reduction of services to our community, um, certainly. Those priorities would be set based on, based on the um. Critical services and, and, and providing those first, and then if there's a, if there's a revenue stream that, that helps support those. And anything left fro- from that would be um kind of trickle down, trickle down the priority list. And so if you'd like to see that list at the same time, um, to better inform the community and yourselves, we're happy to do that.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, it'd be helpful, very helpful, cause I think a lot of us are in agreement about critical, and then. All that'd have been nice, but we can't afford it anymore, you know, so. I, and having that levels would make it easier for us to make a decision and for let everyone to see how transparent we are. It's like, these are tough decisions and we're cutting things that were luxuries because we can't afford luxuries anymore, so um I think that's okay.
Yeah, I would say we didn't cut luxuries.
Well.
We cut people we needed and.
Yeah.
Uh, gave that work to somebody else.
Right, but how, how, so I'm saying a luxury is HVAC and had a museum, you know, so eh, eh, at this point, you know, so. You know, and a luxury, a luxury is a, a nice trail to walk on at this point, right?
Remember HVAC is heat also, so you get a cold.
I, I know, I know, but at least we did the electrical, so you can put a space heater. I'm just saying, like, this is, these are the hard things that we're talking about, you know? Like, this is like, we're at that level where we can't rise to the neck, we, we can't subductrialize if we're always at this survival level. And you know, I'm, like, like Joe said, I'm a little frustrated about what we're aspirationally wanting to do as a council and what we're trying to do just to survive. So.
Did you say earlier that the TBD could be extended for a second term by the vote of the people's debt? I thought shit, like, without debt, though?
No, we can go for a vote.
Oh, we can?
One more time for ten years.
Well, the management has to be on the table.
Make sure.
I didn't know that, yeah.
Allows us, you can, you can, you've only got it once in short.
So, yeah, we just need to go.
It expires in April of twenty twenty six, so if we need to position ourselves to. Having that, I'm sure that we've looked, have we marked when we would wanna put that on pre-ballot if that, or was I?
No, no, we haven't.
Probably February, I, I mean, I don't know, we'd have to do some research in that, but I, I'm not sure where you position that with an expiration. In April of what ballot it would go on, so we'd have to work on that.
Yeah, we'd have to look at the, the R C W and see when it would take effect based on the vote, and if that could be established. Based on the expiration of the previous, um. You know, uh, assessment, I guess, so yeah, we, we need to do some research there and see how that works.
Um, and the last little bit on all of this too, and this was from the report as well, so I know that maybe you agree with it, but. Uh, proposals, there's pulling, uh, getting proposals for undeveloped city owned properties, so. I think that's something that we could probably be working on now, uh, so.
We heard that from the council subcommittee, and it was in the financial sustainability task force for everyone's benefit. The city should look at landed owns that doesn't maybe serve a purpose, um, and.
We don't have a plan for it today, if it's not a long term, then let's uh, let's debate a proposal.
It costs us money to ensure it.
Yeah.
It's a potential revenue source.
As long as it's, uh, you know, a project that, uh, meets council goals and something we're happy with. And I say we, we consider that now, so.
So if we postpone the Simpson Railroad project. And add that money up to the payment program?
Well, these were just examples. We have a whole list that staff really will um. Develop for you and include in the twenty twenty four budget, so we didn't want that to be in any way limiting. It's just some of the examples of things that are on the list. There are others that could be.
Right, right.
I'm sure you would see and say, well, that's as important as replacing an H V A C at any place. So I think, Mark, if you agree, we've gotten direction on levels of service, um. We'll, we'll bring more information on a revenue increase and kind of where we need to head with one time expenditures and developing the twenty four budget.
Yeah, I, yeah, agreed.
So, unless you have other questions, I think that's, we've got direction now to. In a pretty short amount of time, put together, uh, well thought out budget for all of the funds, not just the. Um, general fund that will come to you. Um, it seems like, or it sounds right now like it's a long time from now, but I assure you it's not in October so that we can. Um, have a good plan for you. But, that's it. Thank you so much for your time and on giving us direction. It helps us a lot.
That's it. Right, any questions for Mark or Mike?
Jay, and she's out there in the audience, Jay and Gay.
Mister Mayor, if you don't mind, I, I really wanna thank Mike and all the city staff, department heads, on down the line level staff. They um have been working on this budget process, not just twenty twenty four, but twenty twenty three now for. You know, four months or, or more, and uh it, it, it becomes a little daunting when you look at um those numbers in parentheses, if you will. Um, and they're steadfast, um, they're creative, um, they have the community's best interests in mind. And I'm just really proud of the work they're doing every day and um the work they're putting out now, and I think that uh. We've got, uh, we've got a good team at the city that'll, that'll work through some of our financial difficulties and get us to a place that um. We're providing the services that the community uh deserves and uh and warrants, so I, I just wanna recognize everybody publicly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Does council have any new items for discussion? I'd just like to thank uh staff and the S P D and all the nonprofits and everybody that's been down at Brewer Park. I have what, five times now, and it's looking much better down there. I know we still have lots to do.
It's been three or four weeks that we've been down there. It's definitely got a, it's definitely moving in the right direction, so we're pleased about that.
I've seen, I've seen a difference, and I appreciate all the hard work of not only staff, it's nonprofits getting down there and making connections with some of these people and trying to get them. Homes, I, I believe, uh, I got a phone call and I even asked council member boat if he could help somebody. And I guess the next day he found a home for somebody, uh, grandma with three kids, and uh.
Oh, yeah.
So, and that was just somebody calling me and, and I said, hey, I heard you had homes, and he said, yeah, I mean, he worked it out, so that was. That was great, and uh got one, you know, one trailer off the, off the side street. It was by Brewer Park, yes, um, but uh, but thank you, and uh, I think it's uh going in the right direction.
Takes the village.
Yep. And uh, any other items for discussion? Then this meeting, so it's adjourned at uh seven twenty two.